Okay.
It's on.
Yes, it's on. It's ten, ten o'clock, and so we're gonna go ahead and get started. So, notice hereby given, West County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the County Judge's Office Commissioners Court Room at five seventy-six West Main Street in Reville, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday, October ninth of two thousand and twenty-five, at ten AM for the purpose of discussing the following items. If during the course of this meeting any discussion of any item, the agenda to be had in executive or closed session, West County Commissioners Court will convene in such executive or closed session according with section five five one point oh one of the Texas Government Code. To any final action, final decision, or final vote be required in the opinion of West County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considering such close or executive meeting or session, then the final decision or final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or at a subsequent meeting of the West County Commissioners Court upon notice there offers the county shall determine. So with that, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Chief Deputy Clerk, could you establish a quorum please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Preseid one, absent. Commissioner Preseid two.
Present.
Commissioner Preseid three, absent. Commissioner Preseid four.
Present.
I'm a county judge.
Present.
We do have one.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, please stand for the invocation of prayer.
I plead the righteous to the flag. To be honest, it's a man. The civil, public, the citizens, the nation, under God, the individual, liberty, and justice.
Did your man stand?
We ask for divine guidance and wisdom and strength for the commissioners and the judges to make just and effective decisions for the public and to work together in harmony.
And you may be seated. Uh, we add, we go to line number four, public comments, is there any? If none, we go to approve of claims, if there's such.
Yes, sir.
And there is. Please, you judge, move to approve. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Herina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number seven, approves of previous minutes, and commissioners, as you know, this includes workshops and hearings that we have to have in order to approve tax rates and budgets and so forth. August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five budget workshop, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five budget workshop, August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five public workshop, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing at eight thirty AM, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing at nine AM, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing at nine thirty AM, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing at nine forty-five AM, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five joint meeting. Action required.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion by Commissioner De Herina, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number seven, text that to provide monthly updates, and I don't see him present. They did not reach out to us as far as, no.
They didn't? This is the second, second vote in a row.
Yeah, but they don't, yeah, so I need to reach out to them and see. So the one, one side is good news that there's nothing under construction, bad news is that obviously nothing's getting improved, right? But needless to say, I mean, they have done a lot of recent projects.
Right.
Uh, but I'll reach out to them. Line item number eight, discussion action to approve interlocal cooperation agreement between Kennedy County, Texas and West County, Texas regarding the housing of prisoners in West County Jail. Commissioners, what this is basically is that, uh, the sheriff has reached out to me several times about, uh, Kennedy County reaching out to him, whether we could entertain the idea and, and again, this is upon approval of agreement with legal and so forth, but as far as, obviously, only if there's vacancies and being able to accommodate, uh, whatever small amount of inmates they would have, he has, uh, he, the sheriff has, uh, proposed, uh, an amount that would be charged, right? And it's in the agreement. He also, uh, also alludes to, um, how much to charge per mileage if they would have to either go get an inmate or whatever, and things of that nature. Now, obviously, there is, uh, what did I say? Possibilities of small revenues could be generated, which I totally am not against. On the other hand, also to be a good neighbor, right? So, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with this, but, uh.
We won't be losing, right?
We would not be, be losing, and they would be paying for, uh, a per diem, which is actually comparable to what the US Marshals are, are paying as well. So that, that's basically where, where it's at, and the agreement is there. So what I would recommend is that if, if you all, uh, are in agreement is, and if we are approving it, that we approve it upon, uh, legal review and
Okay.
to make sure.
This is a pretty new one, 'cause I hadn't heard of, heard about this, no?
Yeah, yeah.
I am.
It is, and again, as I've always told you, right? If, if we don't feel comfortable, we need to know more about it. I'm all for table and having better discussions. I just felt that, uh, that the sheriff's interest in this is, is something that, that's very real.
No, that's good to, to wanna help, like you said, I, I feel like, and then, you know, if we have the best face, I don't think it'd be better going to the marshals or, you know, into helping them out, uh, but the rate approved's good, appears good. Um, the only thing that I, I would, which I've been away from that for a while, is caution is the, the actual transport ourselves.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times with marshal service, you kinda get into that, but the county next door would almost incumbent on them to do the transport. But I don't know, I mean, that's just my thought. And it mentions here that there's a reimbursement on the mileage rate as well as deputy slash jailer overtime rate. I don't know why we jump right into overtime, you know?
I was gonna ask, uh, Judge, they're the ones that are gonna be submitting reimbursement for that, so, um, I know Commissioner De Herina said, are we gonna lose money? Well, they need to make sure that they capture all the costs, um, related to that transported, so we can make sure we get our money back if it's gonna be reimbursed fully, right? Um, and that way, the county doesn't miss out on that expense that was incurred, and I think.
Make sure they're keeping track of it.
Yes, uh, because that, that would make sure that we don't lose money, because then we'll have an expense that we won't get reimbursement if they miss something. Now, I don't know how they, like the commissioner says, um, if they're gonna be, uh, putting it separately on the time sheet, 'cause I'm, I'm pretty positive they're gonna wanna see time sheet if they're gonna wanna get reimb, they're gonna wanna pay for OT, you know, time.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they're gonna mark it separately on the time sheet, um, how they're gonna track that.
How, how, okay. How, how are they doing it now with the yearbook?
It's just part of their, well, when they have the inmate transports, it's just part of the regular, um, work week, because it is part of their job. But in this case, if they're gonna request reimbursement, you know, um, I'm not sure if they're just gonna note it on there, like the day of, and if that's acceptable to Kennedy, who's gonna be reimbursing. So maybe you wanna check with them, what are they gonna be asking for as support to get reimbursed, the OT, if that's what they're gonna request.
But that's only if we're gonna go pick them up.
Right.
If we're doing the transport. Yeah, so most of the time. Yeah. Hopefully, they bring them.
My understanding of some of these others, uh, but I don't know for a fact that they, they do their own transport. The counties know, the marshals don't, 'cause they don't have a transport division, they just, you know what I mean? So, uh, and I don't recall in the past that it was in the contract to charge mileage and overtime for the, for the transport. That must have been something that transpired, certainly.
Right.
'Cause it gets real complicated when you start having to do the overtime rates and, you know, do you keep this individual over just to make the transport, stuff like that, so. You do it as part of the job, you know?
And then, um, they put a fixed rate for this, um, per mile, per trip, but usually that changes every year with the IRS. Looking to maybe an, it can put us per IRS, um, standard mileage rate instead of putting a fixed cost, 'cause that, you can't change it later.
I agree.
So, um, then that way, they make sure they keep up with the rates every year. They can ask us, we're more than happy to share that with them, with them. Um, but whoever's going to be doing this, you know, it's going to be essential that we don't lose money for stuff we don't get reimbursed, if that's part of that trip.
Right. The, what kind of inspires me is that, um, you know, it, it's, it's not something that, it's not being done elsewhere, right? As you know, the reason that we have that economy here in the regional detention center is because they had inmates basically all, all over the region, right? So, we, what I'm saying is that these types of agreement exist, county to county right now, so I think if we base it on what's already working, right? And I'm hopeful that the sheriff did that, I'll be upfront with you, I did not, um, but maybe we can, 'cause I, I'm sure that no county's gonna wanna lose, um, monies.
Yeah.
Uh, if they're housing other inmates from other counties.
It's a great opportunity, I, I applaud them for getting into it, I just think the nuts and bolts of it need to get tightened up.
I agree. I agree.
So, we can approve it upon legal review?
Legal review, and we're looking at it, make sure that, you know, uh, what we talked about is put into that agreement. 'Cause that's a good idea. Because one of the things, Commissioner, I'll, I'll go into, I guess, I know you mentioned the other parts, as a discussion, is that, um, it, it would be something to entertain for the jail to be able to bring in these revenues to where, uh, and Madam Carmen, I'm not sure if we can do this or not, but to where those revenues can be captured and then reinvested in that, uh, particular department, uh, such as, um, units, vehicles, things of that nature that are ongoing and that we know that we, at one time or another, have to invest in doing that, right? So I think this would be just another layer of revenue that can be done for that, right? I'm not saying at this time to, to use it for that, but I think that
Feature.
the, the, the more opportunity we, we have to increase the revenue, the more we're able to take care of, of expenses that we know are coming, that come up every so often. And so, uh, I, I sure would, would wanna explore thi, this idea, I mean, uh, this, and, and again, uh, and forgive me for not doing this, but is it for one year, or do you have?
Yeah.
Do you want me?
It is for your.
It's probably one of these that.
It's on number nine. It says, it's for one year, uh, shall continue, unless terminated, set forth here.
So we can always, uh, feel the waters for one year, so you gotta go to the, you know?
Yeah, I just don't see how many they hold, I mean, I guess historically they would know, 'cause they house them in Kennedy County, no, Cleveland County right now. So we should have a pretty good number. The only thing concerned, like I said, is, is the transportation, you know, wearing, carrying a vehicle, 'cause it's a pretty good drive to Kennedy County.
Yeah.
Port out, uh, and then, of course, the overtime. And, and I don't know that they separate that now, Carmen.
No, it's embedded in their work week.
I think, I think we should have a count, a separate Canada somewhere.
So you wanna, so just like the, like the commissioner said, or do you wanna table till later, or do you wanna do that?
I think with more with it, it's gonna look better.
Did you get his motion?
You wanna play it for a motion?
Upon legal review?
Yes, make a motion that we approve upon legal review.
I say. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner De Herina, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number nine, discussion action to approve the Veterans Office to apply for the Texas Veterans Commission, TVC, general assistant grant fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven, action required.
Madam Chief.
Good morning.
Um, the new grant is already opened up for October the first to hyper it. Every other year, we would get renewed, but now they're doing away with that, so we have to apply every year. So that's gonna be for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and twenty-seven, and we're going for the same amount, one hundred and fifty thousand. This is gonna be the fourth year that we have these grants, um, as of July the first. For this grant, we assisted thirty veterans and twelve surviving spouses. The total, uh, traffic that we're coming in, veterans coming in or visiting, it's four hundred and twenty-five, calls so far, four hundred and twenty-four. So right now, we're taking applications for new surviving spouses and, um, veterans to assist with utilities, rent, mortgage. Right now, rent and mortgage were almost depleted, so we have for, um, heroes and utilities. So, and we were just awarded this last grant, we already started July the first of two thousand and twenty-five, and we got the check, so we're gonna, yeah.
All right, so a check. Okay, so just to clarify, the line item is for, for commissioners to approve, uh, the Veterans Office applying for this next year, and you're also here to acknowledge that you have, that we have gotten awarded
Yes.
for this past, for the current year. All right, well, congratulations.
Thank you. We wanna take a picture, we all, too, if you can.
Picture?
You need a motion for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, uh, move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve applying for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and I entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Herina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll give you the check.
One, two, three, some visa, for, for, for. Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's keep it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten, ten, okay. Uh, number ten, discussion action to approve, continue the payment of salaries and pensions from all district attorney employees being paid by the domestic violence unit, Fund Fifty-One, victim assistance unit, Fund Fifty-Two, and bonus prosecution unit, Fund Fifty-Six, grants pending award of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six grant. And Commissioner, Ms. Inah Jose is tied up in an event. She did say that, that she had discussed this thoroughly with a coming auditor, and I'm glad that she's here. And there's, I guess, the next several line items pertaining to these types of programs. So, Maria, so can you just kinda confirm, verify that indeed we're in line?
Yes, um, I did verify in one of the grants that they're approved on, on through the agency. The only thing is the activation of the grant is still pending, so they said that they won't be taken away. The other two, I'm still haven't done confirmation, but, um, more likely they're in the same process. Um, I can confirm and ask, I just told her that, um, I'll follow up with her once I get confirmation of the other two, but she wanted to put it through court just to make sure that, you know, there's nothing that says we cannot pay them moving forward, but I already got confirmation on one of them, so more likely the others will follow through. It's just a matter of activation, because she, she said she did get the award, but they're pending the actual full process.
Okay, so it would be good as far as the votes, you would approve it?
Yes.
All right, please.
Someone would approve that?
I have a motion by Commissioner De Herina, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number eleven, discussion possible action to approve stipend for district attorney's victim assistance donation in the amount of three thousand to be paid from DA Fund Fifty in one lump sum on the next payroll date, if approved, budget amendment will follow. Possible action required.
Yes, so since she had gotten with me, um, she wanted it, uh, to do it last year, but since the meeting, uh, it was on Friday, we, I had all the information, but we, there was no form, so she said she wanted to bring it back in this fiscal year. And so I already worked with the budget amendment, which is in today's meeting, so if y'all approve it, it's included also in there.
There in line.
Yes.
And it's all from proof?
Yes, for Fund Fifty, yes.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner De Herina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. At number twelve, discussion possible action to approve to hire part-time intake clerk to work no more than twenty-four hours, um, a week at a rate of twelve dollars and fifty cents per hour to be paid from DA Fund Fifty. If approved, budget amendment will follow, possible action required.
And this is the same situation, yes. Um, this one, she, she was gonna have it in, she had it in another fund, but since that, that fund is no longer funding it, she's moving it to Fund Fifty for part-time.
Can I, can I want to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner De Herina.
Second.
To approve, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number thirteen, discussion possible action to approve to hire full-time district attorney investigator at a salary of no more than seventy thousand per year to be paid from DA Fund Fifty or DA Fund Sixty, depending on available funding. If approved, budget amendment will follow, possible action required.
On this one, she had, uh, talked to me, um, she hadn't mentioned the amount of salary, so, um, I will have to follow up with her on this one. If she cannot do the full amount, that's why she included no more, because I told her she's running out of funds, so we need to review it more closely. So this one, if y'all approve it, at least it's, it's a go, but if there's no funding, I will tell, I won't be able to do the budget amendment for her.
So can we approve it based on availability of funding? I don't know if it says that on the line item, but.
I think that, uh, she had mentioned something about it could also be part-time, if there's enough funding.
And she didn't include that in here, but I guess it's just, uh, she put full-time, I don't know if you wanna put in the motion full-time or part-time, so that way we don't have to come back.
Um, can you move?
Yes, sir.
I, uh, maybe I want you to approve, uh, to hire the full-time slash part-time, uh, district attorney investigator salary no more than seventy thousand per year to be paid from DA Fund Fifty or needed, uh, budget amendment to DA Fund Sixty, depending on available funding.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner De Herina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number fourteen, discussion action to approve submitting formal letter of acceptance to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the update Texas Colonias Program Survey, action required. Morning.
Good morning. Yes, sir, um, that is for the program that I presented, um, in the last meeting, uh, for the full honesty for the update. And so, um, we need to formalize that it's submitted to the Texas Department of Agriculture, that the court approves of the study as it's already been completed. And I did provide the commissioners, as per your advice, Judge, for them to have a review and to be sure that they didn't wanna edit or add anything. So at this point, um, the letter that is attached in your packet, that's a letter that I created so that if you approve, we could submit it to TD.
Can I, they have motion to approve?
Someone would approve this.
I have a motion by Commissioner De Herina.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number fifteen, discussion action to purchase membership for the RGV partnership for five hundred dollars to be paid from Fund Forty and to approve payment upon invoice received, uh, action required. Uh.
Yes.
Commissioners, I, I had, um, brought up about us continuing to have involvement as a region in the organizations that basically cover the whole region. This being one of, we have been, uh, members before. I'm not sure, Jessica, if we are currently and we're renewing, or we're gonna just renew?
Yes, sir, we're gonna renew, I think, uh, West County has been a member for a long time, but then post-COVID, of course, the networking, everything changed. So, uh, Judge Guerra, you know, as he wants to continue along the court with the vision of moving forward with regional efforts for economic development and, um, highlighting other things like tourism, this is what the partnership will provide. And I also included the membership investment, 'cause we are, um, Judge Guerra approved for me to submit for five hundred dollar membership, and it's gonna be paid out of Fund Forty, Fund Forty being hotel motel.
and it's gonna be paid out of Fund Forty, Fund Forty being hotel motel. So it gives you access to those five checkmarks that are there from invitation, of course, as a member, access to membership portal, business listing online, company recognition, and to promote our events on the social media platform as far as the region. And also, they also, the partnership is key also for the state and national. So, for example, the legislative tours.
So there, there are different benefits, commissioners, about these organizations. This, this one has been around a while. And in fact, in the, in the near future, I'm gonna bring up and, and also recommend that we become also members in, in other organizations that are fairly new that, in my opinion, will be beneficial as a region and thus include as, as part of the region. But nevertheless, this one is a smaller one and the partnership is five hundred.
Yes, and their main opposition was the COVID zone.
All move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejeda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion?
I just wanted to add that it is some of the other organizations that I get involved with, they mention partnership a lot. I applaud y'all for, for wanting to do that. I see we're on the, we're on the business membership, y'all were good?
Yes.
There's other selections too, huh?
There is?
Yes.
And if you, I certainly entertain the other selections. I know it's at five hundred here, but I'm sure we can adjust.
The only thing is, is that I, I just want to make note, and I think would be great. The reason is, I met with Ms. Earth with our auditor, and so she may want to elaborate a little bit on the membership.
Well, the membership and
As far as?
Yes, and I just want to bring up a point that I just noticed on the paperwork right now, Jessica. And we didn't get to talk about it because I didn't see the actual form. It's not a contribution, and we have put in the contribution, but we're just gonna make the change to membership.
Oh, I, I apologize. I remember we did discuss that, and I put, I'm so used to the contribution. It's dues and associate.
Yes.
Turn it up, line it up.
Yeah, I'm hurting my speech, so we can sort of dig on, because I had that already on the agenda. But most of this, if it's gonna be from the county, we, we cannot, we cannot promote ourselves as a county. The reason why this is, this is what she mentioned, that this is a membership to promote, advertise, you know, for tourism or to, or can you elaborate more?
Yes, so you're correct on that. And in the past, if we go back to the books, to the record, we, it was, the membership, the membership was being paid from Fund Forty. Again, I wasn't here when you created the Fund Forty.
Yes.
But that is probably the key word, is tourism. And that's something that we will, the, the partnership's gonna work with us on the language that we need in order for it to be.
Yes.
So the business level is what would fit for counties, is that what you're saying? Instead of the law?
Well, at this moment, yes.
At this moment, yes. But if we, if you, if you feel otherwise and you want to further discuss, and we need to bring it back so that you can discuss it with the members of the court.
The, the, the good thing measures, as a matter of fact, and I totally respect the auditor following guidelines this far, is the mistake about it. The county cannot promote itself. I mean, what? So the, the reason I bring it up is, we, we'll have other types of funding that we'll be able to, to do that, right? So in this one, I want to make sure we pay, and I want to make sure that we're within the guidelines. And we can certainly, as I mentioned to you, we'll be coming back to you, whether it's to Commissioner's Court or through other, to be able to have a broader net of being included as a region. I think that's important. I think that's, that's the way we need to go on for the future.
Yes, Judge, and I just want to clarify, when I meant not promote ourselves to general fund tax payment. That, that's what, that was the key. Other funding, if it's allowable, definitely, I agree. If it's allowable, you can move on forward. But what I was referring to is general fund contributions or, you know, promotions, promoting the county, because we're not a business, a for-profit, we're just county government. So I was referring to general.
And that's what I'm saying, is that there is means, I don't think any county, the state of Texas will not promote themselves. But you're, you're right, we still need to follow the guidelines and tap into funding that is within the guidelines. So on this one, I just want to make sure that we are within the guidelines. As far as five hundred?
Five hundred.
All right. All right. Can I entertain a motion?
Oh, you have a motion?
Oh, we did?
Motion, a motion, a second. Asked before, we're in discussion, okay.
So any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Line number sixteen, discussion action to approve accepted notice of award for the Texas General Land Office for CEPRAC cycle fourteen funding for a total of ninety-nine thousand for the Laguna Point Shoreline Protection Phase One project. Action required.
Yes, sir, so we did apply, I did come before the court and approve to apply for KEPPRA funding or funding by the Texas General Land Office, the GLO earlier in the, the year, last year, last fiscal year. And so it went under review and we were selected. And this is for Laguna Point, which I know Commissioner Tejeda had also met with us, sharing concern as far as the erosion along the shoreline. So this is phase one for Laguna Point. And this is what we were awarded, the ninety-nine thousand. And there, yes, sir.
This was specific for the erosion, right?
For the erosion. It's the phase one study, and we will, it's a sixty-forty with the Texas General Land Office as other projects that are brought before the court. And the county also agreed to match with GOMISA funding.
One of which Commissioner Tejeda has been very much involved.
This is a sixty-forty from GOMISA?
It's the Texas General Land Office, it's the GLO, it's the funding agency for KEPPRA, and the match, sir, will be captured with GOMISA funding.
And I'm glad we got a, a set for that. It's valid.
Yes, and you also had a presentation when we were seeking approval to apply.
So all move to approve?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejeda, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Line number seventeen, discussion action to approve accepted notice of award from the Texas General, General Land Office for CEPRAC cycle fourteen funding for the amount of a hundred and eleven thousand for the Fredstone Shoreline Protection Phase Two project. Action required. Same thing, but phase two.
Yes, sir, this is phase two for Fredstone Park. I'm glad the Texas General Land Office understands that we also want to protect our investments. As you are aware, Judge, we're already in the advertisement phase for the construction of a second phase for the Fredstone Park here. So this is, I, I celebrate along with you that the Texas General Land Office continues to fund us so that we can improve not just inland, but also the shoreline.
Great. So if I do my math, it's two hundred and ten thousand total.
Is this another sixty-forty?
Yes, sir, the, the match will be captured through GOMISA funding.
All move to approve that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tejeda, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Line number eighteen, approve of monthly reports? Sheriff, I just, I just want to bring up, I'm sure you know, we did approve the agreement.
Yes, sir, I apologize for being late.
No, it's fine, it's fine. So we're, we're moving forward with it. I'll share our conversation with you. We will meet with the DA if there's anything we need to tweak.
Okay.
But as Commissioner said, he applaud you for those efforts.
Thank you.
Hopefully it'll be beneficial. We'll try for a year, see what happens.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
We just did it with pending legal review.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Sheriff.
Judge, move to approve and vote for the report.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve monthly reports.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tejeda. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Line number nineteen, approve of travel request.
Travel request for Jessica Rodriguez to attend the Fundamentals of Foreign Trade Zones FTC on October twenty-second, twenty-five in Austin, Texas. Action required. Travel request for GED's office Cindy Adamite Gloria C. Cortez, Devisia Moniz, and Zoe Rodriguez to attend the TVCAA Key Personnel and Victim Assistance Coordinator Conference on November the fifth through the seventh, twenty-twenty-five in Greatvine, Texas. Action required.
The GED's office normally pays from their own funds? Is that, is that the case?
Yes. I believe Fund Fifty-Six is on here. And Fund Fifty-Two and the match of the grant.
Move to approve travel.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve travel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tejeda. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty, approve of treasuries report.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Mr. Rubin, how are you?
Good morning. Well, there's nothing really insignificant in the treasury report, just the balances and income and withdrawals from the accounts.
We have something to discuss after we have a little bit to do. And actually, now you want to, you want to approve that?
I can answer your question, sir.
So my understanding is that Texas is gonna have their own stock exchange. Have you heard of that?
I have.
And it's gonna, it's gonna kind of, I guess, either benefit or whatever the way we do our investments, correct? We're not there yet, though, right?
I don't believe that, that falls with the statute that governs the investments, which is the Public Funds Investment Act. Not yet.
How does mine affect us?
So it's gonna go through the legislative process?
Yes, and I know they're opening up, yeah, the stock exchange in Texas.
Yeah.
Which we're not the only state that has that. There's, there's other states.
But I think it's just for individuals and private companies, not local government.
Just wondering.
I, I can tell you one thing. The little experience that I've gained here is that I think more and more counties are relying on interest-bearing accounts to generate, which, as a matter of fact, we just met with another representative of another investment this, last week, wasn't it?
This week.
This week.
On Monday.
So, Rubin, our treasury continues to look for ways and means of how to make those monies work for the taxpayers. That might be one.
Something else that brought up, I just came back from training, can't remember exactly what it was, I know that was part of it. There's something coming down the pipe that's gonna positively affect us. I don't know exactly what it was, the, the stock exchange, I know that's.
Yeah, I've heard about that one. A couple of months ago, the governor signed the bill. I think it's called Tex-IT or T E X I T.
All right, so on, on as well. As far as the numbers, it's concerned, this is for the, uh, September. Oh, so this is the last. All right?
Yes, sir.
And we need to take a motion to approve.
All move to approve that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-one, approve of budget amendment. Okay, oh, we have another one right in the screen?
I think my quarter is on there.
Okay.
No?
Okay.
I'll put it in the next one. I was gonna table it, this one.
Do we have budget amendments?
Yes, and that's the ones that she requested today.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just gonna give y'all Jessica's updated budget amendment since when I haven't discussed information with her. We had seen there was some contributions before, but upon reviewing the actual paperwork, it's a membership. So I just made that change. And you can see that from your screen and compare it, because I have put in ninety-one ninety-five. But it should go into membership due to subscription. So I'm just providing you the updated one.
All right.
Okay, so that way y'all can update it.
All right.
Bottom number stayed the same.
Yes, sir. And then, like, the two budget amendments, I'm sorry, the two line items that Annette had requested on the today's agenda are on there. The third one, like I said, we're gonna have to come back once I find out the available funding.
All move to approve that. I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve the budget amendment that's submitted. Any more discussion?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Approve of Texas Collective's report. And we have the receipt here. And this is the, the final report?
Yes, for fiscal year.
For fiscal year, commissioners. And it looks like we did two hundred and eighty-one thousand over the projected budget of six point eight, which is great. Also with a collection rate. Tell me if I'm wrong here, is it ninety-five percent? Is that correct?
Yes, for the levy, collection rate.
Wow. Wow.
Yeah.
That's great. That is great. And then on the link one. I'm looking at it sideways, that's why. Let's see, so we met budget.
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's good and good.
Hoping they get everything done with Lightfoot C I S D, so it's not my statement, that's the only thing that's coming here.
Yeah, so, and just to kind of update you, commissioners, as you know, the Lightfoot C I S D reached out to us, we went to visit with them, the C I. And it looks like we are moving forward with us collecting their, their taxes. It's been reviewed by Ms. Inah Jose. Unfortunately, we just received the agreement today or yesterday?
Yesterday afternoon.
Yesterday afternoon. And so once that's approved, then we need to come back to Commissioner's Court to approve. I will tell you that what I, I will tell you that, uh, what we're kind of basing it on is the latest agreement that we have had, and that was with CNI, not to long about it.
Yeah, twenty nineteen.
So we'll, we'll see how that comes back. And, uh, and we're, we're in a crunch as far as time is concerned, right?
Yes.
But needless to say, that would be, uh, hopefully more revenues. More revenues coming in.
Yeah.
I think it's a win for the county and for the, uh, school district as well. Uh, okay, so if, if there's not, no questions or comments, can we entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Vasquez, second by Commissioner Tejada. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Inahosa. Line number twenty-three, review of special claims. This is just a review, so we're good, we just started, so it shouldn't be any issue. Line number twenty-four, review of monthly reports in County Hall. As you all be, we're trying to make some changes over there. Line number twenty-five, review of monthly, and we'll retain that as well. So if there's any comments or questions, line number twenty-five, uh, it's, uh, confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding pending counterparty litigation, deliberating regarding pending counterparty litigation, and confer with, with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel regarding legal issues. And none of the three, uh, uh, are, are we, uh, gonna discuss that you know our attorney attorney is not present. So can I entertain a motion to take no action, line item number twenty-seven? A, possible action, B, possible action, and C, possible action?
Show move.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Vasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tejada. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Vasquez, second by Commissioner Tejada. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Vasquez.